Mr. Mascariotola?
Yes, I'm here.
Dr. Bees?
Here.
I'm supposed to be here.
Roger. Mrs. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Soder?
Here.
Mrs. Zada?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. First, curriculums are online, so anybody can go to Nutley's website and click on the curriculum and observe it in its entirety. Tomorrow is the Rotary Club of Nutley's reception for new teachers at the public library, and that is at 6:30. On Monday, October 18th, we have a F-Day Schedule Articulation Day. Also, Monday, the 19th, and Tuesday, the 20th, the New Jersey School Boards Association, I don't want to use the word convention, I don't believe it's convention anymore, but gathering in-service training is in Somerset, I believe. And on Wednesday, October 20th, the Taxpayers tour of Nutley. We will start out at the middle school. We will transport any interested citizens by bus to the elementary schools, and then finish up the high school. We will have a schedule up on the website tomorrow. Looking ahead, we have a board meeting on the 25th. On the 27th, monitors from the State Department of Education are going to be in the district going through our money expenditures to make sure that we comply with the intention of our money. And on the 29th, we have the Essex County Superintendent's Roundtable. Two minor things. One is I met with Mr. Soder, not minor, but certainly something that's in the near future. We are going to seek some public support or financial support from Grant Hoppman, the Roche, or other agency, and develop parenting classes, which Mr. Soder and I will be working on. And also, in response to Mrs. Russo's suggestion, we did put a notification on the website regarding head lice. We will keep everybody informed. In the past, I believe we have the philosophy, okay, it's in the fourth grade at whatever school, but between recreation events, scouts, brownies, children from all schools coming to contact with each other. So we would like to give everyone a notification without imposing on anybody's privacy. We will just tell individuals in the community where there is an outbreak of head lice in what school they want to grade, and that will be on call. Thank you, Mrs. Zada.
Ms. Yaman, does she have anything to report?
I have received a request from the new site manager for the Nutley chapter of the American Red Cross. They have been using a vehicle from the Parks and Recreation Department to go down to the community food bank in Hillside to pick up their food. And evidently, it's an open truck, and they have been told that they can no longer transport food in an older vehicle. So they've made a request to find out if we have a vehicle that would be available to them once a month to help with the driving and unloading. So the hours they are looking for is 12:30 to 3:30, and I'm currently looking into whether we do have a vehicle that can make available to them for this once-a-month food delivery. I also had a conversation today with our construction manager, just to ensure the fact that all of the heating systems will be operational in case we do need the heat come October 15th. And they have reassured me that every school has functioning heat. The last one to be tested will be tomorrow night at Antqal, but water is flowing through the system. So we are on schedule to have the heat if necessary this week. Hopefully, the warm weather will stay with us for a little while longer.
Any other committee reports?
Yes, Superintendent.
I have two, finance and the technology portion of the agenda. With respect to finance, we met on September 28th, Mr. Zara, Mrs. Yaman's, myself, Mrs. Cervazio was there for a portion, and Mr. Dymas was there for a portion, but also. The first thing we talked about was extended day, and we requested, Mrs. Cervazio, a report, a monthly report showing the enrollment and staffing, income and expenses, tracking throughout the year, and so we know exactly where we are and what your attendance is for the extended day as we move forward, particularly with the implication of all the kindergarten and how that's been impacted. Second item on the agenda was the district phone system. The current system, the software is three versions behind. It's the hardware, can't replace, if some of it's inoperable, we can't replace it because of the old software. And we have nice to present it to alternatives to shore up the system short of replacing it, which would be about a half million dollars. And in the resolutions, there's a resolution in there, one of which is $1,083 a month for this year, upgrades the software and allows us to fix hardware. There are some floors in some of the buildings which don't have phone service at this point in time, including middle school, because of the outdated software. So that's in the package. We talked about the 2010-2011 budget. We'll be watching it very carefully. It's a very tight budget, and Ms. Yaman said two items came up very recently. One is repairs, which is the pension costs. Came out to about $100,000 more than was fudgeded. There's a rising rental premium, $84,000 sitting out there. We negotiated it for over two years, so it's $42,000. It's $142,000 right now, unbudgeted expenses, and we have to come up with money, plus whatever legal fees, however that's going to shake down, could be some issues. So we have to really keep a close eye out, and probably in the near term, we have to cut off discussion of the spending. It's a not good situation. In addition, we received this year $261,000 of the federal money, which went to the state, and the state got $268 million. Our share by formula was $261,000. It's one-time infusion, and we use that money to, for the hires in September, we hired in September. So keep in mind, it's a one-time infusion for ongoing costs, so that just evens the whole for the next budget year. Next budget year was the fourth item on the agenda, 2000 and 2012. Mrs. Yaman's putting together a high-level projection of revenues and expenses to see what the situation is going to look like, and we're starting to come up with options to ensure that we have a balanced budget. And then the fifth and final thing on that agenda was also, we're going to start putting some operational expense analysis. First, just functionalizing costs and seeing where we can provide the same kind of service, but do it under a different cost. And there's some substantial dollars to be get charged. That's finance report.
What's our current surplus? Where are we going?
As of that meeting, we had not gotten the report from the owners yet.
I understand that, knowing that, what's our current surplus? We obviously have, it just hasn't been on our resume.
It should be around.
Thank you.
I can't touch that, though. My understanding is until later in the year.
I understand.
Technology, meaning, a few things that we covered. One was the computer apps class, we discussed that, and we need some more input. I have a recommendation coming shortly on that. We had a discussion on that. Also, we had discussion on the policy and use.
Let's just touch on that since Mrs. Russo made a point at last meeting that we're after apps classes. So we're going to bring, I understand our intention is to bring in some administrators at the next meeting to discuss this.
Yes, to discuss.
Excuse me. Mr. President, I actually met with Mr. Catcher this past Friday as part of the academic committee, so we weigh in with this perspective. Do you want to mention that in my report? Captain, you want, but I mean, it'd be nice to have him come in and give his own overview of what it is for the technology people as well.
And so the policy committee should be getting, we touched on that, some issues with respect to policy, policy and use of technology in the district. The final thing we did, we went over some development plans for this year, about six items on it, and we're making progress on all of those. It includes PTO postings, which is in place. The principals are in control of their own school, as to what goes up there, and we should be working with the PTO president to ensure that what is needed from the PTO perspective is up there. With respect to electronic notification of grades and progress reports, that is in place for K through grades seven through 12. The progress reports, they'll be getting a notice with their each parent. They will be given the password, so they can get in and view these things and view the grades online coming into the market period. With respect to K through six, before that can be accomplished, we have to have electronic grades. That will be worked on this year. The target is to have training for the teachers in the spring and initiate the electronic grades come September. With respect to teachers posting information on the website for their students and parents to see, we have a pilot program which is being initiated now. This intended to be expanded in November to larger group, and ultimately, once we settle on a format and what content, that that would be extended for the availability of all teachers to use, and also we're going to have to look into to what extent we can require teachers to post things on the internet. That's a legal question, contractual question to approach. And then the final thing on the report on electronic attendance in high schools is being worked on. That's my report.
Any other committee reports? Yes, Academic Committee?
Yes. It's real briefly, we actually met this past Thursday, October 7th, Principal Catcher Bone Superintendent Zara. And again, to touch upon it briefly, the computer applications course was brought to our attention. I guess from my notification, I was curious, is it a district requirement or is it a state requirement? According to Principal Catcher Bone, he stated that, being that we do tie this into the financial literacy component, it does fulfill a state graduation requirement. I actually arranged for Mr. Ackerman, Coordinator of Business and Technology, along with Dennis Williams and Jill DeBilio, along with the instructor and Reed Malane to come to our next board meeting to address whatever concerns there may be regarding that course. Principal Catcher Bone is amenable to waiving the, not waiving, but he will actually allow students to sit for a final exam. If there is a scheduling conflict, he will allow them to sit for that perhaps, and waive the computer applications course, which dovetails nicely into another piece that we addressed in regards to scheduling. One of his, on his wish list, in which Mr. Catcher Bone provided to me back in May, this idea of actually extending the school day, going from a zero period to a nine-period day. We talked about the benefits of actually doing that. It would allow for the expansion of course offerings in each subject area, which would entail more electives. It would also allow for mandatory remediation of students failing standardized tests, along with supplemental instruction for all students. And again, the opportunity to avoid or hopefully eliminate scheduling conflicts. So that's something that hopefully we'll put on the board. I know Superintendent Zara and I discussed, meeting with the NEA, that discussed those scheduling conflicts with the union. In terms of what that will look like, the current high school day starts at 15 and ends at 2:38. The proposal would start at 7:23 in the morning and end at 3:30. We also discussed improving, or at least raising, the educational bar for the National Honor Society. The way it currently stands, we have a 3.5 GPA, which allows approximately 37% of our student body to actually enter the National Honor Society. Unfortunately, we have students in the National Honor Society who have actually failed the ESPO test, so needless to say, there's a need to hopefully remedy that. The recommendation is to raise that to a 4.0, which perhaps would actually at least allow for the top 20% of our student body to actually make the National Honor Society. So in the past, we did open up the floodgates, and the idea is hopefully to rectify that. And last but not least, we talked about New Jersey Monthly. Principal Catcher Bone will be at our next board meeting, and I will be working closely with him regarding a PowerPoint presentation to look at the actual methodology involved within New Jersey Monthly's rankings, staffing, school environment, school performance, and school outcomes. And it's important to note that the Jersey Monthly included data from the NJ Department of Ed's most recent Jersey School Report part. So our hope is to see how we can propose some solutions in terms of improving our rankings, and that was it.
Thank you. Any other report?
Yes, sir.
You have a report?
Yes, I do. First of all, the report, very good.
Thank you.
I'm here to report to the board regarding our SOS grant for security has been denied. Periodically, I have called Milladium Strategy, Mr. Goulon, to update myself as far as the process, and at the time I had called last week, it was denied. District knew about it the week before I knew about it, before anybody else knew about it. I was a little ticked off about that. There was no explanation for the denial. She's going to look into that, and we're going to see what we can do in the future. So as it stands right now, that is that, we're going to move along hopefully with our project. Mr. President, would it be appropriate for me to ask or request of the superintendent this time regarding this security project?
We can do that under all business.
Okay, then I have two other ones that I'll do also. Just wanted, was it appropriate now? No, it's committee reports, I'll do that under all business.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now, come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulations allow 20 minutes for this communication. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay with it, as required. Speakers may speak, more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic at the moment. All statements will be directed at the committee chair, and no one may address the board members individually. And as usual, if you're too likely, personally direct abuse, if I've seen, your conversation may be terminated. Please come up and speak if you wish to speak on agenda and resolution items on.
Good evening, Mr. Russo. I have a question, a couple of questions regarding the superintendent's addendum. First of all, I want to confirm that these were not on the original agenda that I saw over the weekend. Is that correct? Specifically salaries?
It's an amendment, it's not on the original agenda, that's correct.
Is there a reason that this wasn't on the agenda?
Yes, there is. These salaries were discussed with the negotiations committee, and the chair of the negotiations committee, Mr. Spizato, and I just want to jump in, wanting to meet with everyone before these salaries were put before the board to be voted on. Several of those people were not available on a project, so Mr. Spizato, myself, and Mrs. Yaman's did not have an opportunity to meet with those people until today. As a result, this was put together and brought to the board this evening.
Okay, I have a couple of specific questions. Number one, did the $5,000 stipend for security for Mr. Nicoletti, did this come out?
Yes, Mr. Nicoletti is responsible for after-school security. Any issues that occur in our buildings, he is on call over a period of 12 months. If an alarm goes off, if there's any problem, if there's a broken water pipe, any number of issues, a heating issue, he is there. So security is part of it, but more often than that, I think it's being on the scene to direct any efforts that have to be made to make sure that the building's ready to open that morning.
Is that new or was that a misconduct?
That's always been there, to my knowledge.
Okay. The other question I have is rental manager reporting coordinator at $72,000. What exactly is a rental manager reporting coordinator?
Mrs. Cameron handles all of the state reports which are transcribed electronically. They are very cumbersome, there's a great deal of information, inaccuracy counts, so it's really, everything that comes from this district and the State Department of Education has to go through her. As far as a rental manager, she's also responsible for use of the buildings, as far as any building in the district, anybody who wants to use them, whether it's the Girl Scouts, or a dancing school rental for a weekend, any of those issues. So she coordinates all of that. So it's really two different jobs that have been combined into one.
Okay. The secretary for the extended daycare, I'm assuming that does not come out of the Board of Education.
It does not.
Okay. And the last question I have is, just in general, for these salaries overall, especially the ones that are 70,000 plus, please tell me that this, these new salaries for this year, this school year, do not include a pay raise?
Tom Holland, Mr. Spizato, I'll respond.
You go.
The salary increase for some of these positions, but not all of them, was 2%, and of that 2%, the individuals are being charged 1.5% of their total salary for their health benefits. As a contract lapses in New Jersey, individuals in that bargaining unit or at that date now have to pay 1.5% of their salary for benefits. So the overall raise or increase was 2%, and there's an assessment of 1.5% for benefits. And there are some individuals on this list who receive no increase.
And at the same time, we also did the way with traditional health benefits for all, so everyone's step down to the Jersey direct.
Okay, so overall, in general, it's either a zero-up increase or a 2% increase, but if they got the 2% increase, they were required to pay 1.5% towards their benefits?
Correct. And those people that did not get an increase, they are also required to pay 1.5%.
Okay, great. Let's keep that in mind next time we have a teacher's contract, okay?
Anyone else who's to be heard?
Evening, Mr. President. Alan Thomas, Windsor Avenue, McKinley Street. Mr. President, I will go further than Mr. Russo, and I object to the board's consideration of the addendum tonight. This is the type of information that certainly should be before the public, longer than the five minutes before this meeting started. I understand the scheduling difficulties, but we are, the board is considering a resolution to make salaries effective for this school year retroactive to July 1st. What would have been the harm of putting this on the next public meetings agenda and including it with the public dispersal of the agenda on the internet? You know, this looks, I'm not accusing anyone here, I'm just telling you what it looks like. It looks like you're hiding, you don't want people to see what people are getting paid. That's what it looks like. I know all of you are people of goodwill, but you just know that's how it's going to look like. So why in the world do you kick yourselves in the butt by doing things this way? It's just too horrible.
Certainly, I don't see your opinion, and it's noted.
Specifically on, from the description that Mr. Zara, Mr. President, gives of the rental manager reporting coordinator, I'm not convinced that salary is commensurate with those duties. But I think that's something for the board, the personnel committee, maybe to look at in the future. My question, as I suppose you could expect, has to deal with the school residency slash resource slash safety officer position. And my concern here, as I have often stated during the school year and previous to this year, is that this is not the complete salary for this position. We have seen, just in the last couple of months, additional stipends being paid for the person holding this position for other duties. And I don't understand why we don't just have one big contract that says all those things are part of his, or in this case, that his duties. Again, appearances. It looks like, oh, we're just going to give Mr. Farah this small salary.
Yeah, point of order, Mr. President.
That's okay.
Point of order.
I'm listening.
Thank you. Have we discussed personnel without them being raised?
He's allowed to discuss.
Reimagine my game.
It's on the agenda, it's part of the resolution. You can discuss it.
No, but still, we did not raise any of these people that we talked about before.
Fine, go ahead.
How was all?
Thank you, Mr. President. It just seems to me that it looks like you approved this salary, and then over the year, you pay a little bit more, a little bit more, to a little bit more, and thus, we never get a complete picture of how much this position makes. And considering that he is everyone's favorite person, it just looks bad. And I don't think it's a good way to run the school district, to have that kind of a situation. I have other questions, I have other resolutions, Mr. President, but I'll wait.
You can take another minute. Well, I'll let you know when you're done too long.
Since Mr. Rogers has visited here, I thought I would ask questions about the telecommunications I know there has been discussion in the last few public board meetings about working with the township on telecommunications. And I know that this, what's up for approval here is a 60-month lease term, that's five years if my division works still. And I'm wondering, will this...
What resolution are you referring to, Mr. President?
Board Administrator's Resolution Number 1, sir. And I'm wondering, is this going to conflict with what we've also got going on with sharing services with the town?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Could you explain how it will work?
Well, I think if it's a five-year, if it's a five-year lease, if we decided to move the joint services part back, would that be correct, Mrs. Yaman? Hold on. I was just getting a question. I understand that Mr. Cook is trying to make the point where this ties into the phone issues that we have, that you discussed earlier, but go ahead.
This is strictly just for the phone system itself and the software to run the phone system. It's very, and there's a little piece of hardware here, but this does not in any way have a connection to the internet links that we've been talking about.
So when you say hardware, what are you referring to specifically?
There is an analog piece of equipment that currently is not functioning and irreparable, and that is the reason why we do not have phone service in every place in this particular building, in this building in particular, at this point in time, until we can get this new equipment operating. Any more technical questions about it, perhaps, Mr. Lee and Mr. Sturrock?
Okay, we can discuss it when we get the resolutions. Go ahead, fair question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. And finally, Mr. President, on Board Secretary's Resolution Number 4, Request for Use of School Buildings and Grounds. Seems to me there are some non-school-related groups protesting. And I'm just wondering, a few meetings back, Mr. President, we struck a couple of groups from the rest.
Temporarily.
Temporarily, until we got clear on what is our policy in terms of fee charts and the non-school groups. I'm wondering if that was resolved, and if so, what was the resolution?
It was resolved.
Yes, that, those specific resolutions were approved at the last meeting, and they were for some outside groups to use the gyms for, I believe one was a girls' basketball team, I'm not sure where the other one was, and they do pay per hour fees for every hour that they are in the gym.
And what is that fee?
I believe it was $40,000.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Anyone else who's to be heard on the resolutions?
Hi, Russo, 18th Street. I have a follow-up question on the Board Secretary Resolution regarding the lease agreement with NEC. I looked at their website briefly, and one of the things I thought was very interesting, I kind of liked it, was their emergency notification system, and how it would, not override, but how it would supplement the 911 system. Does that include it in this lease agreement?
No.
It's not. Okay. Given the fact that, Mr. Mascariotola just said that we had a security issue rejected, given the fact that there is a conflict with the ongoing shared services with the town, given the fact that Mr. Rogers has been asking for probably close to a year now, not more, for us to reconsider our overall phone charges, before we get into a $156,000 five-year lease, I will respectfully ask you to put this on the back burner for at least a month, until you can look into it further. I can't see you locking in to a five-year lease for over $157,000 when there are a number of contests.
Yeah, with all due respect, I think that Mr. Rogers refers to cell phone bills, not phone bills. I don't think he's specifically referring to these phones. These are phones that are in classrooms, that are necessary for security and everything else. He doesn't object to that. I believe he's objecting, but we feel happy to sort that out next minute.
I think it was all communication.
We'll take it into consideration.
Thank you.
Anyone else who's to be able to know? Seeing none, let's move into the next portion of the meeting, Mrs. Presentation of our Superintendent's Search Friends, and here with us tonight to discuss her company and her vision, is Kat Sosa from Social Center and Stern Educational Consultants. Let's listen to Mrs. Sosa. Please, I reintroduce the...
Okay, let's discuss halfway, if you want, that's fine. First, thank you, Board, for inviting me back. I understand you want this to be like the 10-minute abbreviated version, so I will do my best to give you the condensed version, and then address any questions that you have about search process. As we had discussed the last time we met, all searches that we facilitate are credential and criteria-based. You would identify the credential, minimum credentials your candidates would have, the criteria that you would want them to meet, and that would be reflected in the advertisement that we would work with you to develop for that position. We process all of the applications for you. After people submit their cover letter and their resume, we ask them to send additional application documentation for you that includes their most recent evaluation, their proposed entry plan if they were to be your selected candidate, as well as certainly their credentials, and then have other, just factual information, their contract expectations, which we know are becoming more and more limited by the guidance of the state government, so that becomes somewhat of an easier process. We would also facilitate input meetings for your staff and for your community, so that you could hear from them as to what they feel that you should be considering in looking for the next superintendent. We share that feedback with you for your consideration through the process. We believe that the search belongs to you, so we do bring you all of the paperwork that we receive. It's all ranked in accordance with your criteria and credentials, but we don't just come in and hand you, you know, these are the five we like best. You get to see everyone that has applied in your search. As an independent consultant firm, we also have the opportunity to headhunt for you. We have professionals that have contacted us, let us know that they are interested in superintendent positions, we have information on their credentials and experience, and the type of district they're looking for. So once you would establish your credentials and criteria from people that we know that would match that, we would reach out to them and encourage them to be among the applicants in your board. Also, when we receive applications from people that we are not familiar with, that either they have not contacted us, or we have not had any professional working relationship with them, we conduct first-round phone interviews with them. So we're not just ranking them based upon what they submit on paper, but more inclusively what we know in having an actual interview with them, and their knowledge of the district, their experiences, and what they feel they would bring to nothing. When we bring you the application pool, we present it to you as how the various candidates rate with your credentials and criteria. You'll have A candidates, you'll have B candidates, you'll have some people that may not meet. Maybe they don't have New Jersey certification. Maybe you require a minimal number of years of administrative experience, and they don't have that. You will still see that paperwork, but with the understanding that you can't consider them because they don't meet the legal parameters of your search, and we want the entire process to be legally defensible for you. Our experience is, on average, boards will interview eight to nine candidates on first-round interviews. We work with you to develop your interview questions, so that they're related to the criteria that you're looking for. We stay with you during the interviews. We don't actively participate, but we're there with room for you. We help you facilitate your discussion after the candidate leaves, and there is a resource for you if there are any questions that come up during that interview process that we might be able to offer some clarification. On average, boards will narrow that pool about in half for second-round interviews. Second-round interviews are far more candidate-specific and lengthy, but again, we are still there with you. We give you guidance and suggestions on your interview questions, and we're there as a resource during your interview process. When you are down to finalists, we will give you the resources for doing reference checking on those finalists, again, so that you stay within the legal parameters of the types of questions that you could be asking when you're checking on people. We suggest when you're down to those finalists, that if you have a committee of the board, each visit the district where that person currently works. Sometimes it's very different from what you've seen on paper and heard in an interview, and then actually seeing person. And then we would also suggest that they would each have the opportunity to visit nothing when it's live, when your students are here, when your staff is here, not just in the evenings when you would most likely be conducting your interviews. We give you information as far as the legal parameters relative to your contract offerings. You know, I'm sure you've all read in the paper that the governor has more and more suggestions as to what those will be. We keep you current on that information, and I'm sure your attorney can give you that information as well, but also provide you with information on other searches that may also be reaching that same point, you know, in time on negotiations, so you have an idea of what's competitive in the field at that time. Another thing that we do is we come back when you've completed your search. Once you have selected your next superintendent, and that person is here and in the district, we will come back and facilitate the transition workshop, so that the board with the new administrative team have that opportunity to share expectations, identify your effective means of communication. Maybe you like to get phone calls, maybe you'd rather get emails, some of the simplest conversations that can be very meaningful if you have them right up front, and get off to a good start as a new team. So that's the reduced digest condensed version of the search service. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Russo, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
Mr. Moskowitz.
Kathy, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
How are you? I have a couple of questions, I think within your dissertation, but I answered some of them, but I just wanted to get it from you. Having from school boards for quite a number of years, and I believe you're involved in one of our searches, maybe both, maybe one?
Uh, maybe one.
Can you just highlight real quick the difference between what you would offer us as far as what school boards offer?
Okay, I can tell you some of the things that we see as value-added. As you said, I was in school boards for 10 years, and my colleague was also a school board staff member. We started this basically from board members reaching out to us, asking us to still work with them. Some of the things that we're able to do, headhunting is one, that we can actively contact, and we have people who have contacted us and let us know their types of searches, so we have that.
Do you think that's one of the biggest differences between your firm and between school boards?
I think that's one of the biggest differences. Another is the fact that we do phone interviews with candidates that we are not personally familiar with. If all we have as far as information on them is their paperwork, we will take the time to do a phone interview and make that part of our consideration ranking and our report back to you, findings that we happen that. The staying with you through all of the interviews, it's a process that school boards used to do and that stopped doing, and that's something that we still make available. And then the transition workshop being part of the process. I would say those are the major things.
Thank you, your presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Sod. No, you kind of answered all my questions when our private meeting occurred.
Mr. Cook.
You've answered my questions.
Okay.
The interacting with yourself and the community, or yourself and the staff. How long of a period are you looking at? I mean, do you sit down for four hours, three hours a day?
Oh, no. No, it's generally, it's, a lot depends on how long the people want to stay and speak with us. Generally, the meeting that we hold with the staff, we do at the end of the day. Oftentimes, districts will choose to schedule it in the same timeframe that they would normally have a staff meeting, so it's something that people kind of already had it planned in their time to do. There are some people, if that's the case, they will come and they will stay for the contractual time that the staff meeting would have been, and then they'll leave. And there are other people that choose to stay, and as long as they stay and, you know, have information they want to share with us, we'll speak with them. I would say, on average, it's generally an hour to an hour and a half that we're there with staff, and very similarly, in the evening, you know, generally, the evening one, we would suggest-
For community.
For the community, we would suggest it be similar. You know, your board meetings generally start at seven, if that's the timeframe people are accustomed to, you know, then have it at seven o'clock, and probably about an hour and a half is the general length of time that we-
Normally, you give a large response from the community?
We usually get a good response. You know, a lot depends on just some of the basic planning, as long as it's done, so it's not in conflict with a lot of things. We make information available to you, flyers that you can distribute, that you can post on your website, so the more people are aware of it, the more turnout we get. I would say, you know, probably a good turnout is about 50 people.
And it's recommended that we, as board members, not be there?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Good evening, Susa. As a follow-up to my question when we initially met last week or so, looking at the current districts you're working with, could you give us a timeframe in terms of what does this lead that process will look like for now?
I would say, you know, beginning to end, and that's allowing for a, your selected candidate to give 60 days' notice in their current position. Generally, it's a six-month process. You know, by the time that we advertise, receive all the application materials, bring them to you, you have the opportunity to review them, to prepare, scheduling through the interviews, you know, doing the district visits, having them come here, doing reference checking, all of those steps. That collectively takes about four months, and then allowing that person contractually, they're going to have, if they're currently in a position, they would have to give a minimum of 60 days' notice. Part of what we suggest that you do at the end of second-round interviews is ask those candidates, what is your contractual notification, and is there any possibility that you could be released early? Maybe they have vacation time or whatever, but at least it gives you a sense of the timeframe that you would have to work with if that's your selected candidate.
Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sod.
All right, no questions.
Thank you.
Your fees, I don't know if the public has this, so could you just detail your fees for us, and we'd be interested in how that works?
The fee is $8,000, and the only thing that's not included in that would be the cost of the print advertisement in the Star Ledger. We recommend that be the only print advertising that you do, because our experience is that if you spend the additional funds to advertise in The New York Times and Record, that we really don't get response from them. When we try to look at it and find out, you know, where to do here with this, the Star Ledger is known nationwide to be the place to look for education jobs in New Jersey. And while it's running on that, it's also posted live on their website through that entire time. And then additionally, at no additional cost to you, we submit your ad to all the professional associations, send them to the 21 executive county superintendents, as well as colleges and universities that have education administrative programs, so that they have, you know, either on staff or, you know, within their adjunct faculty, they know people that might be looking, and they share that with them.
Tell me about your pool of prospects. Do you have any pool of prospects currently that you have to draw from for all these districts that are about to use your services?
We have people-
And let me follow to that, I'll ask him front and next, if you can, some things that we can. What would the difference be, so all of us sitting here will understand this time ahead, what is the difference going to be, in your opinion? If we had all four companies in front of us right now, and we had a contract with all four companies, and we had a big pile of applications, how many of them would be deplacable, in your opinion?
Well, not knowing the other three companies, I have to-
Well, you certainly know the one.
I know the one. I would, I would say, maybe, rough guess, I would say about 75%.
Anything else from anybody?
I think the important thing is not necessarily, you know, the number or the percentage, but who the individuals are. You know, that 25% difference can be the, you know, the trim of the crop in the pool.
I will leave this group there. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very nice job. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Well, we're doing our own resolutions. Mrs. Russo, Superintendent's Resolution Number 1, please, while waiting for the other one company.
Sure. I can move Superintendent's Resolution Number 1, as was advised, so.
Send her in.
Second, Mr. Sod, discussion. Hold on, please.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski.
Yes.
Mr. Maschertola.
Yes.
Dr. Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Russo.
Yes.
Mrs. Sod.
Yes.
Mrs. Sod.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes, just as a technicality for everybody here in the public, what we handed out in the addendum listed 1 and 2 should be listed 2 and 3, so we can make that change. Mr. Kuzinski, could you please read Superintendent's Addendum numbers 2 and 3, or both of them is listed, please?
Sorry, Mr. President. I move Superintendent's Number 1 and Number 2, I'll show them.
2 and 3, yeah.
I'm sure, you're right, 2 and 3.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cook, discussion.
Discussion.
I guess, Mrs. Russo.
Number 1, Mr. Cook was starting to explain a little bit about this to me, it sounded somewhat like a Band-Aid fix.
Number 2, you think about the super-
That's the VA's.
Sorry.
Removing Superintendent's Addendum Number 2, break. Any discussion? Seeing none, hold on, please.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski.
Yes.
Mr. Maschertola.
Yes.
Dr. Reed.
Yes.
Mrs. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Sod.
Yes.
Mrs. Sod.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes. Okay, let's move to VA's resolutions. Mrs. Sod, we should be kind enough to move 1 through 5, so.
Yes, excuse me. I move VA's resolutions 1 through 5 as ready.
Second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cook, discussion, Mrs. Russo.
Yes, discussion on Number 1, we see green with N E C. Do we have the finance chair? Please offer his explanation again on why we chose to go with this contract over 60-month term.
And while we're talking about this, as a follow-up to that, do we have an option? Do we go with a one-year lease with an option for another year, two years or three years? Because I'm, you know, just looking at this, I'm a little uncomfortable with Mr. Cook.
It should be nice to talk to him anytime, but-
Well, I'll give you all that, you gave all, what you want to talk about on that initiative here, it's appropriate.
Basically, with this program, it is the hardware, you can set, you know, the stuff that supports the phone system itself, not data or voice, I'm not talking about the data or voice charges, I think it's with Mr. Rogers, everyone says no to, but it's just, and there are, right now, there are areas of this building and others, where the phones do not look to us, and there's hardware prop issues, and you can't replace the hardware into the current hardware, because the software that supports the phone system, we are three versions behind. So first, you've got to, and we have not had a maintenance contract on our phone system over the past several years. So that is, so as your software goes behind, and you can't get the hardware, so this, what this contract does is allows us to upgrade the software and replace the hardware that is needed to be replaced. We could have one alternate, would be to do it all this year, and spend all the money this year. Would be, would have been an alternate instead of spending, this basically spreads out over a five-year period. And given the status of the budget, I mean, the situation that we're in right now, we felt that this was a better alternative than might be the whole bull if I can. Either that, or just let the phone system go the way it is and not have phones that are working everywhere. That's the other alternative.
So that's the alternative.
And again, I want to reiterate, this is, you know, with the town, some of the, the opportunity for the shared service involves voice and data, which this does not, this is not involved with that. And, you know, and the voice and data is a little more complicated, because we have, we have fiber and the town has T1 lines, so it gets a little more complicated. So it gets a little more complicated as we down the road, as to whether we are not, we can do anything with the town. We have a better network. So at some point down the road, the town probably could dig you back on ours, but they need to get fiber first before that can happen. So the issue is a little more, you know, this is, you know, the nuts and bolts of a phone system.
So this is to fix or replace broken parts of our phone system?
Yeah, it's like I mentioned, a handset, you've got to replace the handset. But if you've got a cordless one and it doesn't marry up with the home base, you've got to do something.
But we're still going to be three generations behind.
No, no, this, this, with this, the software gets updated to the current version of the software, and it alleviates the problem of when hardware goes and replaced in hardware.
Mr. Cuzaro?
Is this for phone, for phone communications within the school, like the teacher wants to call down to the main office? Is that what you're talking about?
That, yeah.
That's it?
Uh, I think, well, I mean, it's, it's, it's the link into the voice is, you know, it's phone, phone systems. Make phone calls, not just down to the, to the office, but they have to call outside or wherever they have to call.
Well, why, why, why do we need teachers in the classroom calling outside?
Now, he's saying it includes all of it. He didn't say teachers in the classroom will call out. He's talking about like the main office, the phones in the main office to call out.
Oh, that's a personal-
This is the whole phone, this is the phone system. It's an older phone system, which, which works. But if, if we upgrade the software and then we're okay with it, we don't have to replace the whole phone system, which is about half a million dollars. That's not necessary. This is an expenditure that-
Mr. Cuzaro, back to you, Mr. Kuzinski.
No problem.
Mrs. Russo?
My question was, Jim, you mentioned that this, we don't have a maintenance contract. Does this include a maintenance contract for the five years that we're working on?
Yes, for the five years. So this puts us back into a maintenance contract.
And I really think I should be asking the business administrator. Because I, I think it's a little controversial for a board member to be given that in Portland. I'd rather ask the business administrator, but this does include a maintenance contract in this agreement that we're going to?
Yes, it does.
Was, was this RFP, was it bid or necessary or not?
No, because this is proprietary, the software is proprietary, and we currently have this software. We just have a old version of it.
I understand, I get it.
So would this be considered an extraordinary circumstance where we wouldn't have to put it out to bid?
We don't have to, because it's proprietary, it's all for you. If we went out to bid, we would be going out for our entire news system.
I understand, I'll come back to that. Mrs. Russo, you have a question?
Mr. Kuzinski covered it if we had to, if we got proposals, if we looked into any other companies, if anything else would be less expensive unless it seems like a lot of money.
Mr. Cuzaro?
Yeah, am I to assume that the phone systems we have now in all the schools don't work? Like the main office phones?
You know, but the issue we're having is in this building, I believe it's the third floor.
But I'm talking about the main office phones. They, they all work.
Yes.
And there's no problems with them?
To my knowledge, no.
So essentially, what we're really trying to fix here is just primarily the communications from the classroom to the main office, true?
But if, 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 if a phone's went in the main office, if something happened to the hardware in the main office, you'd be in the, then you'd be without phones for, until we went through this process. So, you know, the question is, do you want to put yourself at risk where the main office doesn't have a phone?
Does that ever happen?
Could, I don't know.
If, if I may, one of the concerns several years ago, not too far back, was that we did not have phones in all the classrooms. At the highest level, you recall, the phones were there, they did not work. I understand that. And what, what I feel very strongly about is we have, and our teachers have expressed concern that they have the ability to contact the main office. You know, you know, but I don't know anybody that lives on a cell phone. Nobody's got a cell phone. So my question is, do we, why do we need communication between the classroom and the main office? Pick up the cell phone, you push the button, and you're in contact.
Who's cell?
Yours.
A personal?
Why not? What's the big deal?
The security issue, that's the big issue. Any other questions for President Scott?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. The way I, you know, the way I want to understand this is that it's a software issue-
Please ask the question to the board secretary, she has the answer.
It's a software issue because we presently have it, but it's an older version. In order to maintain what we have, we need the updated version of the software, eh, right?
Correct, we're at level three point five, and the software is at level seven. So that's how marketing-
Now, what is the hardware component of this? Is it backend stuff, or is it, it's not phones, right?
No.
So it's backend equipment, right? Okay. And this will include the maintenance contract?
Right.
To do it all. Now, just to bring off what Walt talked about was, the capability exists presently to phone from the office to the classroom, the classroom to the office. Does it exist? Okay, what is the issue? I'm getting a yes and I'm getting a no.
Phil?
Mr. Vienmaester, isn't that where we're having problems that in certain classrooms, they are not able to call?
We've had, is, one of, one of the pieces of the, of the system has failed. One of this building actually serves the second floor, one room on the second, uh, one room on the third, and actually this room here has failed. We cannot get the placement equipment that works with an older version of the software. You know, the new equipment to replace it, but it works with current version of the software. And without being a maintenance contract.
So my question now would be, once you upgrade to the new software, if we had to replace any of the phones, we would be able to because of the software conversion?
Yes, it's very expensive, I think. Then the new software would actually also make it considerably easier to interoperate with the township's equipment if we look at partnership effort.
Well, we're talking about late as to what happened, we have to come back and go over it.
Whatever that is. Any other questions left?
Yes, to address the issue that was brought to our attention, it was a public portion of our meeting. Is it absolutely necessary that we lock into a sixty-month contract for that?
This was the most economical way to go, and we do need to have the continued support for the system and the maintenance. One of the reasons why this cost is significantly higher, if you would have had a maintenance contract all along, you would, this cost would be lowered by probably about forty thousand dollars.
Hopefully we'll avoid that down the road, and that's double idea. Any other question? So what is, what is the maintenance component versus the hardware and software component of this proposal?
The only hardware piece is about twenty-one hundred dollars.
So everything else is maintenance?
Software upgrade and maintenance.
I just, I'm confused because it just almost seems impossible. Excuse me, gentlemen, gentlemen, please. I'm confused because it seems to me in this age of technology that it's almost impossible to have proprietary phone software. I'm sitting here stunned with this belief that a twenty-one hundred piece, twenty-one hundred dollar piece of equipment is proprietary to one company in the world. Is that possible?
We have to look at this and that. We are trying to make the system integrate with everything else we have in the school district. This is not just a system that's just for this third floor. This is the phone system that's throughout the school district. So we have seven hundred and thirty-two units.
The reason I asked the question is because if it wasn't actually proprietary, then we could get a piece of software to put a Band-Aid on the problem so that all the phones are operational, and then we could put something out to bid, send out an RFI, and get a bid for either a new phone system or... It just doesn't seem, did we contact other companies to see if there's, even though this company is obviously telling us it's proprietary, did we reach out to other companies and see what makes it proprietary? Or if there's anything at all compatible with getting these phones working in this building? Because if this is the only building, it's one piece of equipment, and we can do that, and then put out an RFI. I understand what Mr. Cook is saying, you know, if the phone system failed, that's a whole other issue. But I'm kind of concerned because it's sixty thousand dollars and... Let me answer your question first, then I'll-
I don't know if I have all the answers to your questions.
Well, let's, let's break it down. Can you call any other phone companies and ask them if there was a, any software that they had which could be compatible and get a supplement for this system?
In parallel with the security program, and then with that, a lot of the grant, which we're going in another direction, leads me to what we're talking about. Chairman, I was, to understand, there was no, there was no inquiry made regarding another company or software. So, we have LightPath for internet service, correct? Through cable vision, is that correct?
Yes.
So they have a phone service. And I'm just throwing it out, because I think that the issue that we're running into is numerous people on the board have numerous questions regarding this. Nobody's saying we can't do it, or we don't want to do it, or we don't want to upgrade it. But we all have questions, and I think it needs to be explained in a lot more depth than what it is for us to get a clearer picture of the whole process. Not so much the process of doing it, but the process with the hardware, the software, and, you know, Verizon, Digital Voice, and so on, and all this stuff is out there. So would it be, you can just use cable vision as an example, since we do business with them, and we pay them a monthly fee for LightPath, right? For internet service, for, 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 for what else? Is, yeah, the pipeline that we have going through as far as our, our wide area of local internet, right? Our possible voice. So what, would it cost us a lot more money to deal with them, per se? Do you like to take, go ahead. Who's going to answer the question? I don't care.
We would have to redo our fire phone system, correct?
I think you're really asking, you think we already get our phone services from LightPath.
Okay.
This, what you're talking about here is the equipment inside the buildings, teaching, each classroom, each individual office.
I understand.
Which, TBX is generally our proprietary equipment, proprietary software, but they're still a little bit away from that.
So in a sense, proprietary equipment, but it's, but it's, it works in conjunction with cable vision?
Right, that's, that's its connection.
Because that has nothing to do with the hardware equipment?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I don't think this is an emergency kind of thing, right? I mean, I lasted over there for years with no phone, so I don't think this is an, we have to do this now. Why don't we try to find out and get a better deal somewhere and worry about this at a later date?
He has, he has, he has questions.
I can't hear.
I said, Mr. Vienmaester has-
Well, let's get, let's get the, the unit over. We understand the dynamic, we understand that some phones don't work. How many, how many classrooms exactly have we talked about this?
But is, is it, is it a growing problem with respect to?
If any other hardware fails, it'll be another two dozen, another two dozen per shh, yeah.
And, you know, if, if it's deemed necessary, actually, I think the superintendent has said that the communication between the classrooms and the main office is important. And it's important that the offices have, have this. Again, do we want to put ourselves at risk, you know, while we're spending for the next six months? A phone system, or do we just do a fix that, that works? That the, that will keep our phone system going for the next five years? And essentially, and, and get it behind us?
I got a question, and it'll take offense to begin, but the point is, is I resent the fact because it's like we want to study for six months. If the presentation was put in the report in its proper order, probably we wouldn't have all the questions that we have. Am I, is that, is that a fair statement, ladies and gentlemen of the board? I mean, please, you know, maybe you'd agree with me or disagree with me.
That's why we're having an open discussion, right?
That's, that's why, if it's presented properly to the board, we are living on front decision.
I don't mean to, to grass name, because that's not me, but this is utterly ridiculous. We should have been talking about this before we even put up this resolution.
Let's not, let's not take her. Somebody wants to make, somebody wants to make a motion to table, let's make a, somebody make a motion to table. Second, second, call roll.
No.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mr. Mesgratola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodda?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuzaro?
No.
No.
Mr. Riley?
Yes, any discussion on the other resolution items?
You mean two, three, four, five?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Cuzaro.
Yeah, may I suggest that we have other proposals or presentations with regard to this at the next meeting? So that we don't rag this out?
I'm sure we'll do that.
Okay, good.
Any other discussion on two, three, four, five, call roll, please?
Mr. Cook, then?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes, on two, three, four, five.
Mr. Mesgratola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
No, on one, yes, on two, three, four, and five.
If we were to do one, same, one, two, three, four, five?
Two, three, four, and five, yes. So no.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodda?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuzaro?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Dr. Lebrera from West Hudson Associates, our second company out today. Thank you for your patience, sir. Please come to my ashore.
Good evening, thank you again for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bill Lebrera, and I am the president of West Hudson Associates. The proposal that we presented to you will be carried out, should you decide to hire us to do this, by two people, myself and my associate Peter Stott. We're the only two people who do searches for West Hudson Associates. Both of us have had experience for many years in the state of New Jersey as teachers, principals, superintendents, and later with a position of high responsibility in the State Department of Education. And we now work with Rutgers, connecting the public schools with Rutgers in, in all of the three counties. So we remain active in this state. All of our searches are done in this state. Our searches have included the largest school in the state of New Jersey, the school district which is in the world. And Patterson, which is the third largest, all the way through to a very small rural school district in Warren County. We spend a lot of time, in all of our searches, contacting people, recruiting people, if you will. Because the nature of the search is that you should advertise in journals that are widely read. And you should also have people, in our opinion, to contact other people for references and as well as for people who have interests. Because we remain active in the state of New Jersey, we think that that's an asset to us. Additionally, I have worked in two capacities in this county. I was the principal of Columbia High School for a number of years, and later superintendent in Moncler. So this is a county, this is the northern part of the state, is a part of the state that I know very well. And the search proposal that we presented is a sample. And we continue to say that we will customize the search. That is, we rec, we present, here is how we have done it in the fifteen or sixteen districts with very little variation. But there can be variations, and we suggest, as you well know, that the first part of this is outreach, in our judgment, to your stakeholders. Asking them the things that they think are important to seek in the, in the search for this superintendent. And that can be done very efficiently, usually that doesn't take more than an hour. And then that data is brought back to the board, and the board makes a critical decision about just how accurate or whether there needs to be other things added to the characteristics of what is sought in the next superintendent. Part of that goes in an ad, the other part is that we recommend that profile of not only the community, but a profile which is longer in length as to the characteristics that we seek to put on the website, so that people have ample information. And then what we do, regardless of how you want to customize a search, what we do is interview candidates before we present candidates to, to any board. We also do preliminary reference checks, which is simply a way of making sure that there are no major problems with any candidates. And we are able to do that, and that's an important ingredient. No one wants to have someone presented and then find out later that there is something of some difficulty that would disqualify some person. And we interview typically around ten people, although it is a very strong field. We have interviewed as many as seventeen people for, for a position. And then what we do is present anywhere from four to six candidates to a board who represent, in our judgment, people who have a very high probability of doing the job well. We never present candidates in any kind of priority order. We just present candidates- We just present candidates that, in our judgment, can do the job very well because it is the position of the board that must be exercised as to which of the candidates, uh, is best suited. And then we have ideas about how, how that can be an open process and still retain the, the critical authority that the board has. It is without question the decision that you have to make on personnel. And therefore, it must be the board's decision and the board's decision online. But we think there are ways for you to get a lot of information in order to inform in the best possible way the things that you need to decide. Our average stay of superintendents is approximately six years. We pledge to any school district that if you're not satisfied with the candidates that we present to you, we will do the search, uh, all over again, once, for the same initial fee. We have another support, uh, element in our proposals, which is really something that is only considered after you decide who it is that you would like to do the search. But we have that possibility as well. So, that's who we are, how we do things, and, uh, we are very interested in this, uh, in this opportunity. And, um, I thank you again for the opportunity to tell you who we are and how we do this.
Is that all the questions?
Back to the same question I asked before, I'm interested in the, in the administrator, the staff input, and, and the community input, just a little bit about that.
Sure. The first part about that we suggest is a survey. And there are various ways of doing that, where you minister it to everyone who teaches, everyone who works on a support capacity and all administrators, so you get light paths. Then we propose that there are various kinds of focus meetings that you do for, uh, people, teachers after school, uh, in, in the district, for administrators, as you would prefer to do that, for communities, members at large, all of whom have had this opportunity. We take all of that information and give you what we believe are the patterns in this. That's the first part. There's another part which is at the, at the end of this, and there are lots of ways to do that. But one of the things that we suggest is that you bring all finalists, you take, we present four to six, maybe as many as seven. Decide who the two or three people are that you really want to consider. Then we think what you should do, uh, is have those people spend a day in, in the district, seeing the, the, uh, the schools, having an opportunity to interact with students and administrators and faculty. And we also think there are some options, and we've done this more than a few times, where you run community forums, where people have an opportunity to come and ask questions in a very orderly way. And that gives you still another opportunity because what we do is put a simple light card schedule together and ask anybody who's been there to fill this out, so that you get an enormous amount of response from your communities, and very few people can say that this wasn't an open process when you do it that way.
Questions, thank you.
Mr. Sore?
You attend all those meetings, right?
Yes. In fact, what we've done is offer to facilitate that community meeting at the end because, uh, what we do is three by five cards, and then we collect them so one person doesn't dominate it, and then we ask the questions of the candidates. That's how we do it.
Based on today's financial climate and, um, doing searches, your president must be doing searches or finished searches recently, what do you think the pool looks like?
What we have found in the most recent search, which we are about to conclude, is we're getting fewer overall candidates known. But inside the pool, the percentage of really talented people is high. So, we think that talented people are still seeking interesting and challenging positions. There's just not as many, uh, people who are sending in initial resumes. We think that's better. And, and, and naturally, there are areas from place to place because candidates do their own homework. But stable and relatively high performing places like Nookland should be able to attract quality candidates.
Mrs. Russon? At what point traditionally does the public participation end?
Uh, that's your decision as to what the public participation.
No, for your, for your end of it.
Excuse me? All right, from, from our end of it, if you choose to have us do the stakeholder first part of it, then at the end of surveys and the end of, of focus meetings, we present to you, here's what we've heard. Then beyond that, you do have the choice. If you want to do what, what we've done in other places, you reactivate that, but that's your choice.
Any other questions?
Where do you prefer to advertise the position?
We think that you can spend a lot of money advertising, so it's really important to carefully consider the cost benefit analysis of things like the New York Times, which are very expensive. We think the Star Ledger is a good avenue. Secondarily, we think that Edweek, because it's a national journal, and it's not that expensive. Those are two places that would give you a lot of exposure, plus all the free online kinds of things that you can access. At minimum, though, we think the Star Ledger is what you should consider. What we like about Edweek is that it touches everybody in the country.
Where are your candidates telling you that they've found these positions? Edweek primarily or?
Lots of different places. No one place in particular, other than the Ledger, which is what most people read. Let me, um, explain this press.
Sure, can you quote your fees, because you have a two component fee that's worth, which is interesting.
Sure, uh, our fee for the search is nine thousand dollars. And then we have another fee, uh, should you want us to continue to work with the district in some capacity that you choose with the superintendent in that critical first year, that's another seven thousand dollars. That's an option.
And we had talked at, at our previous meeting with you that that option can be even detailed a little bit more. For example, rather than go a full year into the, into the process, we could do six months into the process.
We would be amenable to that, yes. And, and very quickly, although we need to talk some more, six months would be a half of. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Seeing no more questions, thank you so much.
Thank you again for that, sir.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay, in this section we allow questions and comments on all school related matters. Regulations are thirty minutes for this communication. Again, any special person shall be limited to three minutes. I guess they did try to state it within this time limit. They stated earlier, all statements will be directed to the chairperson here, and all forums, rules apply. We're getting in the question, we're not having a microphone.
Good evening, Mr. President, Alan Thomas, Point Zero Eight, the Tenneby Street. Mr. President, I wonder if we could have an update on the board's decision regarding the recent, uh, Tritech decision from the legislature?
There's nothing on the board decision.
Do you even have a timeline for that decision?
No.
So, I take it appeal is not, uh, on the table any longer now?
I can't say it's, uh, let you know when the time limit is.
A time limit for?
It's a new matter, so, you know, it's an ongoing new matter, so we'll respond when the time limit is appropriate. Respond on that.
Well, finally, those appeals, a public thing to do.
But it's, once it's done, that's right.
So, the time for doing this quickly, the president. Anyway.
You're surprised.
Mr. President, I, I, and maybe Mr. K, to answer this question, I don't know. Uh, regarding, uh, the, the two hundred sixty-one thousand infusion we recently received due to federal funds, I'm wondering if any, uh, you could tell us what positions were retained or began with those funds for this year? And whether any funds given to use in those funds?
Next question. Mr. Zarab answer the, yes, personnel issue to the board secretary?
That money was used primarily for special education stamping. I can give you a complete breakdown in two weeks, but, uh, in particular, special education with aides that were, uh, assigned one-on-one to students as part of their IEPs, as well as, uh, as, uh, support staff. I'm going to give you a complete breakdown. Perhaps one or two positions were not specially laid, but most were.
Why don't you?
You'll get that breakdown.
In two weeks. And Mrs. James can answer your second, uh, question.
Since we had a lot of special ed maybe positions, as Mr. General Zarab has stated, unfortunately, we were not able to hold any of the money for the second budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm wondering, uh, we, thank you very much for present, uh, having the search firm to come and make presentations to the public. Are these the only two firms that you're considering at this point?
Yes.
Have you done, have you checked on their references? I'm wondering, did you talk to other school boards?
Yes, they, they gave us, uh, their list of accomplishments, and it's up to each board member to reach out individually if they choose to, or reach out and research.
Mr. President, I'm wondering, what exactly was the decision made to use a search firm for this position?
I think, uh, months ago, probably.
Because I don't recall it being discussed with a public opinion. And they asked, is the board going to form a search committee of the board? Or is it going to be done through Mr. Kuzensky's personnel?
It's going to be done as, as it, it's not, it's, I'm a chairperson, personnel committee. But we will do it as a board, as a full board.
Are all members of the board legally allowed to participate in this election process of a superintendent?
As far as the, the council answered that the right question.
If it is an outside candidate, all members, even if they're foreclosed presently, are permitted to participate. There's ethics opinions on point. Once the superintendent is in place, they cannot then participate in the evaluations or, you know, subsequent to it. But initially, for the selection, they can participate.
They can all participate provided all the candidates are not in the district?
Correct. An outside candidate, they can participate.
And how's that work if some of the candidates are in district and some are out?
Then, then, what I've suggested to the board is to first see who the candidates are, and then I will give them the proper legal, uh, legal guidance. It's pretty easy if they're all from outside. If they're internal, it's a different story.
Just a scheduling issue.
And when it comes to developing the criteria, uh, has that been done yet?
No, that's collective. That will be with the board, that will be with staff, that will, that's what they were explaining earlier. Take input from all stakeholders.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much.
Anyone else wish to be heard on any school related matter?
Mike Frisold on Big Street. At the last board meeting, I asked a question about, um, whether or not we had enough books for all the classrooms, specifically, uh, the oceanography class at high school. Do we have an answer to that?
Certainly do. I do. And I'd like to bring that to our attention, very interesting answer. Um, I emailed every principal and every curriculum area coordinator to report on any shortages of books, any concerns, with the exception of perhaps one history course where they were, they had already one or two extra volumes of a book, um, there were no concerns. This is exactly what happens. We have two half-year courses, and, uh, I'm going to try to explain so that, that it's as simple as can be. Course A and B, period one, are taught in that sequence. Course two is taught, B section first, then A. So, mid-year, those textbooks are passed from one class to the other, so we're not running two classes consecutively. The instructor decided to teach the two oceanography courses in the first half of the year, unbeknownst to the chairperson or the principal, and that's where the shortage came. And that was addressed immediately.
By acquiring new books?
No, by putting the courses in the sequence they're, they're supposed to be taught.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
And that's why we're short textbooks. We certainly had enough last year for all those sections.
Ten forty-five hands in place, spokesperson for the parent agency network. Mr. President, I have some packets for the board, if I may hand them over. Thank you.
I also have some information for the public. Regarding solar.
Okay, this comes with a very short story. Um, these, I'm sorry, uh, solar panel, um, traffic, uh, signs, stop signs, actually. Well, pedestrian signs as well. This comes with a very short story. Um, my mother lives in Linnhurst, and every week I try very hard to be a good daughter to my daughter, visit her. And last November, actually, it's about a year ago, I was going around a corner to where she is, and I noticed that something was flashing at the end of the intersection, near her, her house. And when I went to go check, I said, what is this thing? And it turned out to be a solar traffic sign, which was great because right down the street from my mother is a little elementary school, which I attended. And, um, it's just terrific to, to see it in the middle of a residential area. So, it got me thinking as to, you know, wow, this is really a new thing. And I learned, as I went in my travels to Linnhurst every, um, week, I saw that during the summer, all of these signs popped up around town. It was pedestrian signs, it was stop signs, it was all over the place. And I did like a little bit of surveillance. I went around and I checked all the schools where they were. They literally surround all the high schools. So, I, I gave you a packet of all the intersections where they, where they are, all the streets, that we could kind of go and, and look down and see basically how they work. Um, so what happened was I had gone to the community meetings, and I spoke to them about it. And after that, I had, um, I was looking for more information. And I'm lucky because I happen to have a brother-in-law who's the vice president of a publishing firm called, for, for Safety Flyers. So, I contacted him, and I said, what do you know about some of the solar traffic signs? And he says, absolutely nothing, but I have a research department, and I will give that to them. And that's a packet that through those two pages is everything that, that research department was able to find about that. And from that information, I found out that, uh, Cranford actually had a solar grant that they got from the Department of Transportation, from the safety, uh, safety routes to schools. And, um, from that, I was able to contact, my last packet is, my last, uh, handout there is an email exchange between myself and the program coordinator, and asking her, like, how do you guys go about doing this, getting money for, um, for solar signs? And she was, she went on to tell me that it opens up in January, so all you can actually file for the grant in January, and she's, you can actually sign up for it. But all this information comes through county superintendents and superintendents. But I just wanted to share this with you in light of all the things that have happened in this town. Um, also, in just li, in light of, like, all the, the intersections that are so dangerous, such as this one right here, uh, right in front of the high school, where kids go back and forth all the time, and teachers go back and forth. So, I just wanted to kind of put that out, uh, to you and see if you could just consider it. And, uh, it's, it would cost you nothing, just accept the grant application. And they would give you at least a starter, um, money in terms of getting some. As you can see, the, the safety signs, they do cost the thousand dollars, but they're there for, forever, and they, uh, reduce the, um, the extent of accidents up to fifty-two percent, which I really think is a great thing. So, I'm just putting it out there.
Appreciate it. And as a matter of fact, as you know, Mr. Pacheco and I have been looking at this, uh, probably the last thirty days, we actually took a drive together through Linnhurst. And something we're looking at, and thank you for giving us a little more in detail. We'll talk about it in the new business on the walk, if that's okay. Anything else?
No, I want to respond to this right now.
We can, the new business.
Sorry.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
This, Kurt Schill, fourteen Quinian, two points up. With the phone, they asked, not they asked, but with confusion. How old is that phone system currently at? Is it, is it about ten years old? Is it?
Eight.
And it, and my, from what I understand, did it, did it never have a maintenance contract with that ever? Or did it lapse?
It always a lot of lapses, uh, the first year.
By previous people.
Cost it over.
Okay. And then the question I have for the search firm, as the board asks, what's the, what's the search firm's opinion in regards to, like, the six-month process? April, we have elections. Is this board going to make a decision? Is there any direction from the search firm as far as how you have to handle something like that? Is there going to be a change?
Well, it's interesting you ask that question because, well, they said six months, it's, it's probably a four to six month, uh, ordeal. And, you know, we're not going to rush it, we're going to take all the time we need to, uh, to get it.
Do they give any kind of direction to that as far as, is there going to be a change to the current board making decisions? Or is the board making decisions? Is that question answered?
We discussed that, we asked that question, and they said it would be the board that's sitting in these chairs.
Correct.
At the time of installation.
At the time.
And my understanding is, the concern is, if a new superintendent's contract is going to start on July 1st, that a existing board prior to an election, there's a question whether they can award a contract that's not going to start until the new board is sitting. I think that you can't. That's what I think. So I think it may be a new board that makes that final decision. Now, I'm not certain, but it is certainly an issue that has to be resolved. I thought it was addressed with the search firms, and I thought they gave us some guidance on that.
Well, it depends on the dynamic of what's actually...
Yeah, you said it's the next board that will make that determination.
But it depends, actually.
The process now would vary.
Actually, it depends. There's a lot of variables.
Well, one variable, for example, if the new superintendent's contract is going to start while this board is still in power, and that happens, they have the right to do it. So that's another variable. But it's an issue that we're sensitive to, and we have to do it appropriately.
Any other questions?
Mike Frisell, 11 Pink Street. Is the district planning on doing a survey on what students on drug and alcohol use in their future?
A survey on drug and alcohol use?
No.
Well, let me answer. To my knowledge, no, I mean, we haven't discussed it. We haven't discussed it as a board. Is that something you'd like to see? Is that what you're saying? Is that what your question is?
Yes.
Well, I actually, we brought up on our new business last week.
Well, I mean, as far as, you know, if we have a survey, not a survey, don't have a survey, we don't have a survey now, but I mean, it's...
The question was, is the district planning on...
We have not made that decision, but it's something we're talking about. Anyone else wish to be heard? Old business, anyone for old business. Anyone for old business?
I don't know if this belongs in old business, but I know I've asked in the past, when we're getting figures to vote on, if we could possibly have the previous figures from previous year, what it was just the last time, so we have something to compare apples to apples.
That would be old business. Fair question. So you can get it up, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else under old business?
Two. I'd like to request of the superintendent to give a writing from Mr. Vionnet regarding the status of our security property as far as equipment and installation, in light of our denial of our latest approach for a secure school grant. Where we're at as far as a time calendar, and where we're at when we move for completion, and what we presently have to get back on operational. Okay? Fair? The second question is...
We should have it written.
I don't. The second question is, to the superintendent, I had asked the last meeting before about table organization, will you close to that?
Yes, I promised that to you in the 24th, like the bizarre meeting, we will have that.
Will I be able to do it prior to the 24th?
Certainly.
Hmm?
Certainly.
Okay.
Anyone else? Old business. New business. One second. Anyone for new business? Mrs. Russo.
Thank you. I would like to give a thank you to Washington School Junior Girl Scout Troop 324. Very special girls carry the Order of the Banner in the Columbus State Parade, and they did a great job. The girls think she did a good job.
Mr. Sore?
Yeah, I'd like to respond to your comment. About two years ago, I called the police department, and I suggested at the time that they look into buying signs that can be held by crossing guards, have flashing lights or LED signs. And I was told at the time, we don't have money for them. We can't afford it. No, we can't do it. So my second suggestion was, maybe we could at least get those bike flashers, which cost about five bucks, and we could put them on the crossing guard, so at least they can be seen when it's foggy or it's early in the morning. And it was, yes, 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 and I never heard anything more about it. So I don't know if your sign project is going to work, because if you can't afford little flashers, oh, I'd like to buy bucks.
She's talking about grant money.
Oh, you mean, do we get a grant for those flashers, maybe?
That would be, that would be the commissioner that would have to do that.
Well, I don't know, because I say, I never heard anything.
Because it would, that's public safety employees.
Well, I didn't speak to the commissioner, I spoke to the police department. As I say, I even got a lot of guesses.
How long ago was that?
Couple of years.
It was a couple of years ago, the Order of the Banner employees, so we could have done something about it.
It was a year and a half.
I'll certainly bring it up to the commissioner and see if he's...
Good, good.
I promise. Anyone else from new business?
Yes, in response to Mrs. Corax's grant, I know in a few past meetings, we've severed ties with her, so is there any recommendation in terms of where we're going with a current grant writer for the board?
Yeah, I think what we discussed the last meeting is, again, we're trying to form joint service. Right now, we are using Millennium through the grant opportunities that are manifesting themselves with commissioners, so we're trying to piggyback those, but hopefully, by the next meeting, I'll have some. Anyone else? Mrs. Pizara, you have nothing?
No, Mr. Russo.
Thank you. I just want to say that at my ETO meeting here at the middle school, one of the parents, Mrs. Shagman, brought up to me an issue that's a great concern, and that is concussions, youth concussions. And there's a program out there now that I plan to research with the Freddie Scolero Assemblyman of the 36th District, and with more Tucci as well, at the Park and Rec level, where they have a program where kids actually have to take a test before they participate in any youth sports, to determine if in fact they have had a concussion, and they're unaware that they had a concussion. And it's interesting that, just the other day, Mrs. Shagman's son got hit in the head, and when you go to the hospital now, they don't always do the tests that you would think that they would normally do, I'm sure for insurance reasons. But, you know, there were no x-rays taken, because you go to the doctor, the doctor says, it's okay, they send you home. You know, if you're not throwing up, and you're not showing, exhibiting signs, I would be a concussion, they send you home to be hit again, if you're a football player, or a soccer player, or lacrosse player, or whatever it is. So I plan on researching this program, and I'll have additional information at the next meeting. I think it's a proactive, safety-first approach to youth sports, especially with the speed at which sports are played today. There's faster speed, there's more technology, there's more professional camps that these kids are going to. And, you know, football itself is an extremely violent game, and we don't want our kids getting hurt unnecessarily. If we can take a proactive approach to concussions and find out if they've had a concussion before they can put on a uniform and go out to play, it's a...
Yes, Mr. Russo. Long as, like, Mr. Riden, I cast out copies of the state and our district's concussion policy to the policy committee for review. And I think that certainly makes a quantum need to protect our athletes, and make sure they're not put back into a game unless they're checked out medically, and that may be something that'll lead us to you in further discussions.
Appreciate it. Like, personally, thank Mrs. Shagman for bringing that to my attention. Yes, Mrs. Russo.
Just one other question, sorry, everyone. Do we have a status on the nursing staff at High School?
Yes, we do. We have two possible choices, and I'm sure that choice will be made this week, but right now, as you know, we're not on the nurses' area of shared terms, so the school is being handled on a daily basis with no interruptions or interruptions. Anything else? I'm going to go back into executive, be furthered out, and potentially, actually, could be taken, we'll come back out on the search funds for the superintendent, if we're really not sure. If we further it out, the results of discussion will be published in conclusion. The agenda subsequent to meeting Board Education will be terminated, and discussions of the process will no longer exist. We will close the executive session for legal matters and contractual matters. So...